Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Welcome. I am Luann Hurtluff, a trained moderator and member of the League of Women Voters Park Rapids area. The League of Women Voters Park Rapids area is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. Please read more about League in your program. Thank you for attending tonight's event. Our city council candidates are Joe Christiansen, Tim Little, and Erica Randall. Thank you all for taking time to be with us. Thanks also to our member volunteers. Hillary Stoltz is our timer, very important person, so if you have a minute, keep an eye on her. She will be giving you signs to keep us on schedule. And Carter and Florence Hedin will be...
And Sue.
Oh, and Sue, I'm sorry. Carter, Hedin, and Sue Cutler will be picking up cards. If you decide during the middle of this that you want to ask a question and you have a card, I hope, they will come and pick it up for you. Thanks also to Northwood Bank for providing their reading space. We have a, "The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members and the public. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters." League posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. This forum is being recorded by Park Rapids Enterprise as well as our League. We will also have a backup video that we will post to YouTube. The candidates receive ground rules for this event. As audience members, we ask you to remain as quiet as possible so that everyone may hear. Also, please hold any applause until the forum has ended so candidates can use all their time to answer your questions. The League will determine which questions will be asked and will attempt in good faith to cover areas of interest expressed by the audience. Questions will be screened and similar questions will be consolidated so as many topics as possible can be covered. Only questions related to the city council's role will be asked. No questions of a personal nature or that are inappropriately hostile or unclear in intent will be asked. It is our goal to have a civil discussion of the issues and give you information you need to know when you vote. During the event, please raise your hand, yeah, if you have a question for volunteers to pick out. We will start the candidate forum with opening statements. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement and two minutes for their closing statement at the end. The candidates will have one minute to answer each question. And let's get started. And we will start, we will do alphabet, well, yeah, alphabet, alphabetical order is the order of the day, so we'll start with Joe for an opening statement and then go to Tim and then Erica.
Hello, everybody. Park Rapids is a beautiful place. I've been lucky enough to grow up here as a kid. And I love the area. It's part of the reason I'm running for city council is I want to serve my community, do what's best for the community, and I love, just love this town. I got a good working relationship with a lot of the city employees, from the business office to the street guys. Everything gave to me. I've got a good working relationship with a lot of the townships around us. Done a lot of work with them over the years with my occupation that I'm doing. Got a pretty good understanding of what they want to do and it'd be nice if I could help serve in any way that I can. That's, that's it.
Tim?
My name's Tim Little. I was born and raised in Park Rapids and stayed here for my whole career. And I'm very tired now, I stayed here anyway. And I thought, being part of the city council, a way to give back to the city again. I did work for the city of Park Rapids for 31 years, and I was also in the fire department for 24 years. I know pretty much everybody who works for the city. I know quite a bit about the city, not everything, but quite a bit. And I thought this would just be a good way to give back to the city.
Erica? Good evening. My name is Erica Randall, and I am currently on the city council. This will be my 10th year on the council. 10 years ago, when I was asked if I was interested in the city council to fill out the rest of a term, I said, sure, I'll do it for a year and a half. And I've continued to do it because I have really enjoyed it. I never, ever thought that I was enjoying it as much as I have, and so that's why I'm continuing to run for city council this year. I have lived in Park Rapids for 20 years, came here right out of law school. My parents were both born and raised in Park Rapids, so I grew up coming here, and so I was pretty lucky to find a job when I was done with school. And this is where I have now raised my family. During my time on the city council, I've served on several different committees, served on the finance committee, the personnel committee, doing some, involved in union negotiations in that committee, the airport commission, then also on the armory board. So I've been involved in all aspects of the city during the last 10 years, and I think that we've done a lot of really great things in the last 10 years. We've had some struggles, but I think we've come through really strong with some turnover within our city administrator, but we're fortunate to now have a city administrator that is really taking a really great lead of our city. So thank you for your support of the city of Park Rapids.
All right, first question will be easy. What issues motivated you to run for city council? And we'll start with Joe.
Number one would be the safety and promoting public safety for our area. Fire department, police department, that sort of thing. Number two is probably just as important, and that's your economic development and trying to get more businesses here, get people here. Along with that comes infrastructure to support those businesses. And then number three, the arts community. As a guitar player in the area, I play in a lot of different bands, and I love every palette of art, and I'd love to see more of it. The Art Walk that they got through the park, down Main Street, all that sort of thing is great.
Tim?
One of my big priorities, oops, one of my big priorities is infrastructure. I worked with it for years, and echoed right along with housing. We need the infrastructure to get more housing, and we are hitting the goal upon lots in the city limits to build upon. And at the same time, we have some infrastructure at 75 years old, which creates a health issue with no one else who are backups, water main breaks or anything like that. And public safety is another big one. We have to keep them all updated, and very important to have them well-trained, definitely.
Erica?
The biggest issue that I want to continue to work on is just making sure that we are economically very stable as a city so that we can develop the infrastructure without going into too much debt, really making sure that our budgets are solid and that we are putting money away and that we're budgeting appropriately so that when these big projects come up, we can, we can pay for them without passing all of it on to the taxpayers. So really assessing what our city needs are and coming up with a plan to budget for those is really what we focused a lot on the last couple of years, and I wanted to see us continue to move forward with that.
Next question, and we'll be rotating. So Tim, you'll be first, and then Erica, and then Joe last. Next question. What is your strategy to inform yourself about a problem? Where do you look for information and possible options to solve it?
Well, once you figure out what the problem is, you go to the sources that can help you.
It's really hard to hear you. Could you hold the mic closer?
You have to go to the sources that can help you fix the problem, find out where you can get the financing for the problem, and go from there. It takes a lot of different people to fix problems.
Erica?
Thank you. When a problem is brought to my attention, I will follow our chain of command. I don't try to go in and investigate it myself as a council member. I will bring it to the department head and our city administrator so that they can become aware of it and they can look into it and then, and then I'm involved in finding what they heard, what the answers were they received, and then making sure that information is passed along to whoever brought the issue to our attention.
It is finding the source of the, of the problem to start with, and then finding people that know, understand, and know what they need to do to repair the problem or take care of it. So it's not something one person can do by themselves. You have to work as a team. If you're not working as a team, everything is tough to do on your own.
Next question. We will start with Erica, then go to Joe, and then Tim. Next question. What is your position on whether Park Rapids should have a local sales tax?
I think that that question can sometimes be misinterpreted about what a local sales tax is used for. So there is a very, very strict guidelines on what a local sales tax can be used for. And so it's not just as easy as saying, yes, we should have one or not. The statute, we are actually working with this right now, but the bottom line is, yes, I do. I do think that we should have a local sales tax so that we can improve our city streets and roads that do get used by not just city residents all the time, but, but all the people and all the visitors that come to Park Rapids and that visit our stores, visit our grocery stores, and that local sales tax would allow us to have a pool of money to fix these roads, which a lot of them need attention. And that would allow us to do that, again, without having to pass it on to the taxpayers.
Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not a fan of it necessarily, but is it necessary? Yes. We are a huge tourist community, and we need to take advantage of that. It's not, it's not something that the locals necessarily want or need, but as a community, it is something that we should have.
Tim?
Yes, I would be in favor of it. I know it's been being talked about for probably 10 years, and we could use it for infrastructure above ground and below ground both to help solve it, and that way our local labor are not paying for the whole thing themselves.
Okay, next question will start with Joe, then go to Tim and Erica. What is the council doing to create a welcoming and inclusive community? Or what would you do as a council person to make that happen? So, Joe first.
That's a great question, and I never even would have thought of. There again, I think, as far as our community, being inclusive and welcome to it, Main Street is awesome. Main Street is great. We need more Main Street. Red Ridge Park is awesome. That is, when you walk in there, I don't care if we are where you're from, it's just neat looking and everything. And a lot of that's all self-supported. It's not city money that's going to everything for that. So more on that side of art.
Yeah?
Park Rapids backs up the Second Street Stage, Red Ridge Park, the Art Walk on it, the art stuff up on Main Street, all that makes it look better for tourists that come to our town. They're doing a lot to promote the city of Park Rapids right now.
So I'll have to piggyback on a couple of those comments. I agree that I think the Sculpture Walk, the Art League, the Second Street Stage, the city supports all of those things. We certainly do not take the lead on all of them, but we support them in every way we can so that there are opportunities for individuals to come and enjoy Park Rapids and have different things to do. As a council member, I just think one of the things that we do to try to encourage that people are involved and included is we do hold meetings in the evenings at 6:00, which is not during people's workday, so it allows people to come to meetings freely. It allows our city staff, our city employees to come. And we also publish all of our agendas and the packets and, so that people can have access to those easily as well.
Okay, the next order will be Erica first. No, wait. Tim first, Erica second, and Joe third. It's the hardest part to do this. How do you work with people who hold different views from you?
I listen to their side, and they can listen to my side. There's no reason to get mad about it because everybody has different opinions. If you have more than one person, you're going to have disagreements. So you got to work together and figure out the best way to work things out.
Erica?
Well, this was a, I was prosecutor for 18 years, so this was my daily life, with somebody with a different opinion than what I had. But definitely running, I mean, in the council, this, this does happen. There's differing opinions on the council. There's differing opinions on the different committees that the council is involved in. I really just think it's important that everybody has a chance to speak and that everybody listens, and ultimately that we're being respectful.
Joe?
Exactly. We need to be respectful of everybody. I, I do believe that you should be able to listen to somebody else's ideas and their point of view and take it from their side and kind of look at that and say, okay, I see where you're coming from on that. I do like to consider myself kind of like Switzerland when it comes to that because I like to look at every, both sides of things before you really say, okay, this is what has to be. Working with somebody that I disagree with, it's not usually a disagreement as much as misunderstanding and trying to figure each other out, so.
So the next order will be Erica, then Joe, then Tim. What role, if any, should the city council have in setting regulations for the sale of CBD, edibles, beef, and other new products?
I think they should have a role. What that looks like is yet to be determined, but I do think that it is important that as a council, we address this, take a look at it, and come up with some parameters so, so that it can be allowed in a, in a way that reflects what's important to our community and the citizens of this community. But I do think that it should be regulated.
Joe?
I agree 100%. Location would be a thing. It needs to be in the right spot, and I'd say advertising needs to be curbed, to where it's not going to be towards the kids and that sort of thing. But that's pretty much spot on, is what Erica said.
Joe?
I think it should be regulated. I know I, just the other day, I was talking to some people in town, they do have concerns about it. And, you know, same as with tobacco and alcohol, there has to be some regulations to go along with it.
So this one will be Joe, then Tim, and then Erica. What is the role of the city council in developing or providing additional housing to meet the needs of our community, if we all agree there are needs?
There's a huge need. We need to figure out a way to get the infrastructure in to start with because there's not a lot of building lots left in town that are undeveloped. That's going to be a huge part to begin with, and now you've got to figure out how to pay for that. From what I remember in the past where they did a couple developments and they had the assessments put onto the lots, they ended up not being able to sell the lots. So it ended, the guy ended up losing all the lots. I don't want to see that happen. So we do have to do something. Housing needs to be taken care of. That's the only way we're going to grow this town, that's the only way we're going to get more tax revenue, is to get more people in here. And I'm not sure, I don't have the answers, but we can figure it out.
Okay, Tim?
Yes, the city should have a role in it. I'm 100% sure how they'd have to go about it, but we're short on lots, short on infrastructure, and adding that intakes away from our replacement on old stuff. So it's a very hard subject to come along with, but I know they've been working on it with some apartments that came in the last few years and stuff. It all helps, but it's going to take a lot more.
Erica?
I do think that the city should have a role, and I think they have had a role. We've worked very closely with the Heartland Lakes Development Corporation on bringing some housing to the area and doing what the city can to offset some costs to developers without passing those costs on to the taxpayers. So that's the other thing that we have to weigh, is help, you know, helping out the developers to attract them, but also making sure that, that we have the means to develop the infrastructure without passing the entirety of that cost on to our city taxpayers. So yes, I think that we should continue to have a role, and I know that it's, it's an ongoing, always discussion with, with the HLDC, which is an entity of, a joint entity of the city and the county.
Okay, next will be Tim first, then Erica, then Joe. What, so what do you see as the most pressing issues currently facing this city? You could, you could talk about other than housing maybe, since you covered that, up to you.
I think public safety is a big issue, and I know for a while we had a hard time retaining our police officers. Now we're doing a very good job of it. Like I said before, we have to keep them well-educated, keep them updated on our equipment. Same with the fire department. It doesn't do much good if you don't, if you have stuff and you don't know how to use it. Training is a very, very important part.
Erica?
You know, I don't know that I have something that I think is pressing. I do think some of the issues that I want to make sure that we continue forward with and, and working on is the local sales tax and the regulation of CBD. So those are two issues that we need to make sure that we're, that we work on because I'd like to see that come to a conclusion so that we can get both of those enacted. Public safety is very, very important. I have to say though, my experience, I've worked with the local law enforcement for 20 years, and we have an amazing retention in the city of Park Rapids. It's, it's incredible. We just don't lose police officers unless there's a pretty good reason, like moving to Florida. So we're really lucky, and we have a really great chief of police who is always on top of the latest training and the latest needs of the police department, and we take really good care of them.
Joe?
As with both Eric and Tim, I agree. Police department, we've got a great police department right now. It wasn't just a couple of years ago that everybody was jumping off there and going to the county, and now they're coming back, and everybody wants to be back in town again. Fire department, fire department needs more equipment. They always do. It's a rotating deal that never ends, and we need to keep them most supplied we can. That's all I can really think of right now.
Okay. The next one will be Erica, Joe, and Tim. Oh, this is, this is interesting. What should the city use liquor store profits for? Maybe, maybe as a matter of education, what, what are they used for?
A better question, I guess, maybe what aren't they used for? So we are fortunate that we are still allowed to have a municipal liquor store in the city of Park Rapids. And we, the past has been used for things to support the airport, to support street Anything that the city, you know, is working on that costs money, airport funds have gone towards a new building, remodeling of a building, purchasing squad cars. I can tell you that over the last several years, we have tried very, very hard to budget separately for those things, have separate budgets within the police department for the squad cars, so we're not relying on liquor store funds. We have really tried and come up with a mentality that we can't rely on them, on them because there's a chance in the future that we won't have a municipal liquor store, that the liquor laws will change and that funding source will go away. So it's really important to not be dependent on the liquor store.
Okay.
First thing I have to do is find out what they can and can't be used for, because I don't have that answer. Law enforcement, fire department, anything, public safety in that lines. It should be more than that, in my mind, not, that would not be money that would be pushed to, it's like the arts sort of thing. It should be infrastructure and law enforcement, police department, fire department.
Yeah?
I know it's been used for the street departments, partial funding for the equipment that we buy through the airport, it pays a smaller percentage. It's been used for lots of things, and it's a very nice thing to have, but no, we shouldn't be dependent on it. I agree with Erica, but it's, it's a good thing to have right now.
Okay, next one will start with Joe, Tim, and then Erica. Your thoughts about recreating a public city beach in the Fish Hook River?
My thoughts of growing up in Park Rapids, swimming in the Fish Hook River, if you want swimmer's itch, let's do it. Period.
There's really not enough room in the river, and like Josephine Swimmer's itch, one of my first years on with the street department, we took out the canal that was, helped keep the water clean in that corner, but it is, there's really no room for it under river. It's not very better.
I look at the old pictures of when my dad grew up in, in the city here, of the swimming beach, and I would just, I would love to see that. Unfortunately, I do agree with both Tim and Joe that it's unfortunately not realistic with the, with the space issues, and as everybody here knows, it's not just the city of Park Rapids, it's, you know, the DNR gets involved and has a lot to say over things like that. So I do think it's an asset that we are missing in the city. So I do think it's an asset that we are missing in the city.
Okay. So the next would be Tim, Erica, and Joe. A broader question. What is your strategy to inform yourself about a problem? Where do you look for information and possible options to solve it? Kind of like a, really a question. No one's here. Tim?
Oh, there you go.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
When you have a problem, we said before, you've gotta find out what you can do about the problem, where can you get your help? Finance is always an issue. It takes a lot of different things to solve problems, and they're not always easy. Sometimes it takes a long time.
And to say, repeating myself, I guess this is really similar to that previous question. It's really about making sure that you are listening to the issue that's being brought to you and not reacting in that moment, and that you take that information and go to the right people within the city. As a council member, you have people email, stop you on the street, talk to you about a particular issue. They may be very, very emotional about it, it's very personal, it may be affecting them financially. And so very important to assure them that you are going to look into it and that you do it in a timely manner and that you follow through to make sure, make sure that somebody at the city, it's usually Angel or one of the department heads, is getting back to them in a very timely manner with, and setting up a meeting if necessary so that the issue can be explored and whatever the outcome is can be explained clearly.
If you're on the council, you have a big team. You've got the whole city to work with, and you gotta find what the problem is and is there a way to address it? And as a team, everybody needs to look at it, but you gotta find people that are specialized in the area that you're looking at. You can't expect one person to know everything. It's gotta be a full team.
Well, we have gone through all the questions. Aren't there more? You guys are nice and brief, which is not a bad thing. You may have to do the editing because otherwise it'll take us too long. Okay. I, I'll probably just kind of read it and you guys kind of... Sorry. I don't know. So we will do this in the order of Erica first, Joe second, and Tim third. How would you confront the issues of all the dead trees and brush around the bay along Highway 34? I think they mean maybe the...
Highway Bridge.
The Highway Bridge, yeah, okay. Isn't that a beautification issue? Yeah. That's good. Isn't that a beautification issue? Okay.
So I don't see my dad here, but this is a question my dad asked me a lot. So I have to say that I have brought it to our public works department to talk about, just mostly to make sure that the issues that are being identified aren't a safety issue. That's usually where I'm coming from. And then everything, I guess, if there needs to be, if people want to see it updated or then that has, we have a parks board, and a lot of that stuff usually goes through them. I think it's a Parks Beautification Committee even, I think there's a word beautification in there. So I think that that's one of the items that can be brought to their attention so that we can budget for any landscaping, whatever needs to get done there.
Yeah, so bring it up to any of us and then we'll take it from there, go to the, it's not the streets department, but, what's it, Tim?
Public Board.
Parks Board. Have them take a look at it, see if it's feasible to get stuff out of there in a timely manner and do it.
Yeah, it should be brought up to the Parks Board and passed on down and that, and part of that just stayed right away. And if you guys remember, over probably the last 40 years, try and grow something on that highway there. It's about impossible.
We will start, start over on the rotation here with Joe, Tim, and Erica. You know, do you agree with city snowplowing of sidewalks? That's kind of a yes or no question, but you can add one to it if you want.
I sure do because a lot of people don't shovel their sidewalk. And even if it's a deal where you're supposed to go shovel your sidewalk, out of common courtesy, a lot of people don't shovel their sidewalk. I don't think if the city wasn't doing it, I don't think it would happen.
I, I'm yes and no on that one because we've always cleaned Main Street, taken care of that, and then we started doing the other streets, we do all those streets. And if we quit doing the residential streets, they complain, but you're doing streets uptown. And it takes a lot of time and money to clean all the sidewalks, but yeah, I think it's necessary by the way it's set up.
I'm in agreement. I think, I think yes. I think also, people do have to remember though, that it's a huge undertaking. So when that snow falls, you know, they're doing the best they can to get out there to all of the places in a timely manner. And there are areas that get concentrated on first, and there are just places that you don't get, that they don't get to on that first day or maybe the second day. So always, always an issue of manpower as well.
Okay. This time will go Tim, Erica, and Joe. Water and sewer for Discovery Circle, is that even a thing anymore? I am not encouraged of that.
I actually don't even know where that sits right now. I don't know if there's anybody, ideas from out there or not, so I won't say too much, but it's been annexed in, so my feeling is it should follow right along with the rest of the ordinance, so, but we'll see.
Erica? I know it has been discussed at different times. I will say that it hasn't, we, not in the last couple of years has it even, has it been discussed, and I don't think it's on our radar right now. But I agree with Tim that if it's part of the city, I think at some point, at some point, water sewer has to go out there. But it's always been a factor about the cost to those individuals, and that's a very real thing that we have to keep in mind, so.
Joe?
Discovery Circle, all them places were built about the same time, their septic systems are all about the same age, and they're all on the edge of being done. What's gonna happen when all these people start putting in new septic systems and all of a sudden city water sewer comes through? Oh, we had a chance to do this before, and so yes, I think it does need to be done or you're gonna have a lot of people that are upset because they have a brand-new septic system that they're paying for and city water sewer that they're paying for. So it should be done before those systems really start to fail. I know a few of them have failed, but before all of them start to fail.
Okay. All right, this time we will go Erica, Joe, and Tim. TIP financing, tax increment financing, yes or no? If so, how many years? I don't know if that's directed at a particular project or if you're just for it or against it, or what the intent of the question is, but it's always a subject.
Who's first?
You.
To the first question, yes. It has proved beneficial for some pretty big projects in the city of Park Rapids. And then ask for the length, I just, I can't answer that. It really depends on the, on the project itself. And TIP financing is really just one thing that the council doesn't get real involved in, other than the final approval of it. But I do think it is beneficial.
Joe?
Yes, beneficial. Basically agree with you 100% Erica on that one.
Yes, it is beneficial. It's helped a number of businesses get started here, and I don't know the number, I think you call them districts you're allowed to have or how it works, but it does help, help get started. Go on.
Hugo's was a great example of that. That is, okay, any more questions out there from anyone? Oh, are we ready to wrap up? Each candidate gets a two-minute wrap-up, so we will go, we will go and help that out or just easier.
I just want to tell you guys thank you for the opportunity to be sitting up here and thank you for the awesome community that we have. I love Park Rapids. It is why I'm still here. I could have left 30 years ago or 25 years ago anyway. And I stayed because I love it. I'm on vacation all year. I'd like to, I'd like to help our community stay so that everybody can be on vacation all year.
I just want to say thank you to the legal women voters for putting this on. You do a very good job. I've been to them in the past, and if I get elected, I would like to be there to help the city of Park Rapids.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, and thank you for all of you to come, for coming tonight and listening and participating with the excellent questions. I think these are always a really good opportunity to hear what people are thinking, what people want to know about in the city of Park Rapids. And I have, as I stated earlier, very much enjoyed being and serving the community on the city council, and I hope that I get the opportunity to continue to do so. Thank you.
I don't, no, I don't believe he's here tonight. I was gonna introduce our mayor, Ryan Lekner, who is running unopposed for another term. And I also want to thank everyone for attending. Is this on hand? Thank everyone for attending and encouraging you to attend more of the forums. There's one tomorrow night here, same time, for the Park Rapids School Board. And then a third one here, same time, for Hubbard County Commissioner District Three on Wednesday evening. And early voting started last Friday, and the last day of vote is November 8th. So vote. That's always my message, vote.
All right, thank you.